Um. I just.
Oh, really?
Yes. No, it's got one direction.
So. Shoot. Yeah. It's not that. Okay. I'll say it was. Everybody around here knows each other. They're all. I'm not. I'm awesome. First. I'm awesome. Well. You know. I'm doing like. Good. I can't. I've been. Moving like. It's part of the bigger. All right. They have. Send. What are they listening to? For the day's. On Saturday. Always used to be. They are. About us. Or. That's right. Military. I just. That. Because. They. Get. Fun. This one. That's. Say that part of these. And so. You should. Okay. How we want to do this. I mean, I know I was actually going to plan. He's. He doesn't. He. Not. On a server. But. Okay. And then. That's. That's. Funny. I don't need my own. Like. Some. Audio. This. Is. Really? Okay. And also.
Does it need to be? This microphone or I'm sorry, the select speaker, does it need to be?
Can you?
Yeah.
Can you go to the person?
The person right here? Uh huh.
Yeah. And hit invite. And then.
Email?
Yeah. You know. Default email is fine. Hopefully. Maybe?
Not fine. Not fine.
Let's do invite again.
No, no, this is better. Yeah.
Copy invitation. No. Are you trying to log in?
Yeah. Go and shoot it to me like.
I just don't know that the audio is appropriate. Does it need to be this select speaker, the Sony?
The speaker had.
This one?
Yeah.
We started meeting. Would you? You know, this is. The flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A regular meeting of the board of supervisors is scheduled for Friday, December tenth, twenty twenty-one. At nine AM at community center thirty-five hundred Ed Water Drive. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion in the second? Any board comment?
Yes, on page eleven of the report. It stated that I requested to see a strategic plan for the district from the general manager at the start of the new year. What I actually asked for after the first of the year, I would like to see four or five objectives from Mr. Schumacher for the balance of the year and how these objectives will be measured.
Any other comments? The board? Any public?
Just a small.
I want to change this.
So we okay to change it?
Here's your small message. Go ahead. We all share a small type of the top page. We're. Driving. That. Driving. Okay. Public comment? Here we are.
I am supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Any public comment? Okay. Moving on to Commissioner Scott Kirk.
Commissioner Senate. Mail. Previous.
Okay.
All done. Back for the next.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Action agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-four. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve the revised international golf membership rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Now, a motion in the second.
Don't move.
Second. Okay. Any more comment?
Yeah.
This is really very funny, but when we advertise something, does anybody ever check the spelling? They should have. Because in this thing that you all attack, there's this little thing, there are eight spelling errors. Which I just think is an embarrassment. I mean, it doesn't affect. Obviously, nobody's looking at what either we're sending in or the proof that the papers give. Which I assume they give.
Proof comes back and. I don't have an explanation for that except for that's the last thing the person did or reported left and the numbers were wrong too. Under. On the original, but on this one, which was the revised one, it's like I said, this little column, it's eight stoners.
Is that any meaning? Any other comment? The board? Any public comment? Okay, here we go.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-five. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve that twenty twenty-two board meeting schedule. Now, a motion in the second. Okay, any more comment? Any public comment?
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-six. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve budget amendment one dash four. Any motion in the second?
No. Second.
Any more comment?
If I may, Mr. Phil. And um. We're going to move forward and try to add a little more background supporting these amendments. Um, there, there is some backup for the next set of them, trying to show where the money went and why. Um, but that there are some lessons to be learned that this prepared maintenance of fifteen thousand acres up. An unbudgeted expense for the irrigation system here because there is some issues. Some of the other money that's around, we look into, I could say move, it could be something as simple as, well, you had part-time people taking time off. They don't get paid their pay some time. They didn't budget that, so someone else is taking their shift that you're having to pay, so that was, you know, about eight thousand hours. Uh, but we'll make sure to get that budget next year, so. We definitely want to. License and permits that that has actually gone up because permits were given. This wasn't. Was. Not. Just maybe there'll be that next year.
Yeah, just like we said, I mean, next time, just put a cover letter that explains some of the details of what the numbers are. And I think.
Any other board comment? Public comment?
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yeah.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-seven. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve budget amendment twenty twenty-two dash one. In motion in the second.
So move. Second.
More comment? For same.
It's. It, um, this, this is a little different because it's really, there's a capital that wasn't spent about a year. Best example would be under the roads and sidewalks that wasn't done with three hundred fifty thousand. It's the next month. So this is the year when we'll get started in January. Same thing with some of the, uh, bringing agreements, it's just work that wasn't completed this year, so it's, this is transferring the money. This is just capital. I mean. There is some backup on this, it's kind of refreshing. They spent a clubhouse for money items for that capital of paint and breakers, et cetera. You can print this out and attach it to these budget amendments and you can see exactly what it was and where it went.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, to put this, see exactly who knows that. Any other comment?
Supervisor Brooks.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-eight. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve proposed changes for the Southern Lake Golf Club rules and regulations. Any motion in the second?
Move, approve. So I can.
Hey, more comment?
Yeah, I left this, this. Twenty ten dollars. I still don't understand. Why we're going to go through all this. Accounting for the flower waste and the people at the club, you owe this accounting for maybe two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars. And I, I just think it's a waste of time and all of a sudden it's irritated a lot of people out there. And I just don't know if the money that. Is justified. I mean, for some of the. The other question I had.
Try that camera.
We're doing this for what reason?
I think it's on.
Because. The short parts will really.
So you want to do that instead of the screen change?
It's just a. It's. More than two parts of the bird. I gotta. Two people. Where's that?
That's us.
Number one, we all want two parts for. For.
The seat of just.
Okay.
That's the person. This. I control that meeting.
That's nice.
Parts starting with the book. Parts this. Be a thousand dollars. And additional ten cards in January. And that's the reason that we did it.
Well, we're. We gave every year we wear ten cards a year.
Yes, but.
We're gonna have to run more than that. Well, if you don't.
Slang time.
Might just say he anticipates that, but it's, there's nothing to base that whatsoever. At this point in the month.
Did you run on stuff for not last year, but the year before? That was, that's.
We didn't need extra cards to do it. We believe we've never needed more than ten extra. But we, but I mean, is that, is that what we're trying to accomplish or we trying to? Again, I.
We're trying to reserve that. The. This is the end of running out of cars for the meeting.
Change. Cars. For this.
And eliminate the excess practice on the golf course and work.
Most of the problem is that it's not being managed. That's the problem. And those here for golf operations. If you've got people out there in groups that aren't adhering to the rules that were there before this was even revised, you should have been out there telling them to quit or start taking the appropriate action against. My understanding, the majority of the groups that I'm in right now, we're sharing perks. So where's the problem? It's some of the individuals out there right now, by my understanding, that won't do it or have it done, let's look that. They need to be told, that's the rules. If you don't adhere to the rules, appropriate action will be taken. To, to me, this is not something that should be in front of the big board. I shouldn't have to, we should be talking upper level stuff, not day-to-day operations. That's my opinion. I think we created a mountain out of a molehill. And it, it's done nothing. We wasted a bunch of time last meeting on. I don't know how many hours I spent talking to people during the last two weeks between this meetings. And now we're going to have to discuss it. And basically, it's the lack of managing what you got in front of. That's all I.
Any other comments? Uh. Any public comment? So. First of all, I, I got a clarification, this is. Are we talking about what we want or is this the whole back to? And now. I don't know what I'm kind of. Actually talking.
I think what we're voting on is the ten dollars. We're.
That another.
Group. The rules and that we can't really much, there's some changes in there, so there is a rule for maximum one card, maximum two cards per course on. And we can enforce it.
It was there before. Then we relax and go, Brad. I mean.
But that, we did change the rules. The rules have always been there. We changed because we knew this, what was out there with this COVID, and we, as a group, said that's what we thought we should do. The rules are still there. That reason hasn't went away. But we didn't go back and say, you know, and start enforcing.
Well, that's again, that's, that's what we wanted, the clarification on, are we okay to?
Manage the golf operations. That's your assignment. We pay you big money to do that.
Okay, absolutely. We just want to make sure that we're following the order for action. And I know that when we were in the red and the orange.
Andy.
Then we had to relax and so.
You don't need permission to manage the operations of the golf course. That's your responsibility. If you can't justify your actions, then that's a different story. Wait a minute, Frank. Mike came and justified the need to address this because there were a number of. Because they had. I'm sorry, I would interrupt. Never mind. Go ahead. A number of players still are uncomfortable taking a single card. And some of that may be convenient, some of that may be real comfortable. Now, all we're saying is, and it wasn't policy for the head of dressing, was that, yes, they are totally uncomfortable and want to take a single card because they don't want to share a card because COVID. They can, and we're in charge of that part. And that's a new policy we had to address because we issued that we brought forward, required money. So it, it wasn't. Regular order, it was. An issue that needed to be come to the board, so we fully addressed it, and that's what we get in the last. I just feel the COVID, that we'll have to report. To the board. That's fine, and that's.
I didn't. Ten dollars. Basically, I look at the ten dollars at the turn. Ten dollars to me is, you know, if we can enforce one part for two, so two parts for. Well, sure. So if we can enforce, just like you're saying, Greg, you know, one part for two, somewhere two parts for four, so. Guess what goes away? The, or the extra card goes away because now you're pairing up with your buddies, they're throwing away the extra cards. Number one, we're not even going to allow three parts to enforce it. So if we can enforce.
That's.
That would be. Right, which we've got, which is that doctor's, which is down there. So if someone has a valid reason medically, you know, immunocompromised, they get a note from their doctor. We take that to the general manager, we put it on file, and then there's, and we've got three or four of them already right now. The problem is, when the Delta variant came about, we relaxed and we started taking the. So now it's okay, now that we're into that yellow. We just, we're asking for your back to say, hey, can we go back and start? You know, say, hey, Mr. Smith, if you're going to play golf today, and you're in a force, you're not going to be able to take your own card. You're going to have to pair up with somebody that else is in the force. So I, I think. If we can enforce our rules, the ten dollar for a card, I think that kind of. Kind of goes away. We're not going to have to sell too many cars to. And. How I like that.
Yes. My opinion, if we would have managed the ones that are causing the profit, we wouldn't have upset and asked. The majority of the people, I belong to four different groups, certainly, and all of them are. Biden, Biden, I'm using the car. You got the ones that weren't. You just, again, just a matter of management. So instead, you can't rush this stuff in it, in this. Make everybody mad over something that could have been so much better. Just walk there and insist that they do it, or you suffer the consequences, which could mean losing the rights to golf.
And as long as we have that type of backing from five folks over here, we're happy to do that. Maybe I, I don't intend on these four meetings, but I do believe, back when there was very gross, we, we did relax that rule at this level. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're really just trying to get the fact to, to get in this, and that. Basically, that's what we want to do, is do back.
No, send. Is there any other comment?
Yeah, I, I would think we should go back. I would read this, I mean, first.
True.
I would say, no, in this, go back to the way it was. It's a whole lot. It's a problem in December. What's your handle? And he thinks he's going to run short. The ten cars that go to that place. Then the front two of us would say, I got a problem. But he doesn't know that he has a problem.
Well, we won't have a problem if we're two parts. Or national force.
So I'm not going to.
Was that?
And I disagree with him. I appreciate the light of view and proact. But I don't want to be reactive to this situation. You got to show active management here to say, this is a problem, this is going to cost more money.
You know that.
Yes, it's all.
It's not just to be.
Any other comment from the board? From the board? Okay.
Other?
I already did. I can ask, yeah, is there anybody after this last discussion? Come. Okay.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
No.
Supervisor Brooks.
No.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve.
May I ask you a question? So we voted for the perfect. As well.
Yes.
The ten dollars. And the ten dollars. So.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Twelve dash forty-nine. A resolution of the Southern Lake Improvement District to approve the purchase of a Doral Brown Master lawn tractor, a Vintrac forty-five hundred. A mow with extractor, and a Doral Zee Master five thousand, and trade in four more. And a motion in the second.
Motion.
More comment? Any public comment?
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yeah.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
President Gilpin.
Yes. Alan.
Yeah, a couple I'd. Want to bring up from one. We had. Maintenance assessment field process. And we did get a board appeals in. And those appeals are to be addressed by a board appointed committee. And that committee will hear this appeal and make a recommendation or a proposal for a. And that appointment is one board member. One resident. One in four of the. So I'd like to ask the board if they'd like to appoint a board member. I'll, I'll set the role of the full needs for this. Good opportunity to pay a little bit more about your process of process in the Olympics and really resign the board member.
I, I think, afraid of the end race. And that's what I hope to do. And I, I don't afford a great start, so is there any of our, the student board members? It's not really. It's not really. It varies. Just.
I'm hoping they take. You like that? Two?
Yeah. Can I?
Is everyone? We're looking for a right.
He's really long, yeah. Hello.
Okay. Thank you.
And residents, did we ask the volunteers? Or I don't remember how.
No, I, I didn't just. I think that's. Or getting bored and letting go somebody.
I'm not quite sure.
I want to. Actually, you didn't have. I can put out a detail and ask.
I can actually get.
I think there's got to be a spring question.
Yeah. Oh, this, oh, more?
Yeah.
Oh, my. This is just. Residents.
You know what, you know how, what to do is just go and give everybody a copy. So if you do it, the individual may be here, may not be. If they're here, you can go there, let them get up and say what they want to take. They know, and guys discuss it. It's all on.
Three minutes? Right, that's me.
Yeah.
So if we could get a motion in the second. Through. Or. I'll give a motion. I'll second that.
You need a little bolster?
I think we can do consensus, yeah. Consensus on that. Need to. We also had a.
On that subject matter. Did you review the thing that we got from the gentleman? It's looking at the. I'm assessing.
I really look at it. Obviously, yeah.
I don't think you run.
So I, I, I haven't seen it, but like, if, uh, if there's any issues, I'm a resident. So I'll next. Yeah, I'm not a resident, so I'm. Next. If, uh.
Thank you, residents. Anything else quick? In the annual.
Well, we're going to be bringing forward a few at the next meeting. Purchase for the golf course. Uh, issue the RFP. And then to go out to bid, so we're revealing it now in the house, just what's ready for us to bring to this meeting. That will. That's the product. At the next meeting. As will be, uh, provide details on the visit and visit from the leader program. Or if they are managing for us to.
I have a question, the RFP on the golf. Is that the irrigation and turtle loop or just irrigation?
It, right now, it's just there, right? So the irrigation or turtle, oh, I should have applied in, they're trying to work on that now. So the main thing we wanted to try to do is get there around contract and office.
I'm only going to do them like, I thought we were going to do them, uh. I'm running. Right.
Right.
Definitely. But the intention is to get there around, but that, they're still working on turtles, they got the design all done. So once we get the.
So once we get the design done, which is pretty simple on turtles, so when we get that, then they'll put it under. So the main thing we're gonna try to do is hopefully get it approved, but they, they're thinking it's gonna be right in ninety-eight, so we do that. So.
Just, just your.
Six, three, you know, that's.
But as soon as I get it, I'll submit it to you, so basically, uh, what I did today was give first, or David, uh, our property, so you can make sure everything's right with liability and everything. We had twelve contractors interested two weeks ago, and we're down to eight of them, so that's the only sense of urgency. Hopefully, we can get it approved in December and get it out to the contractors. Um, land deer is definitely still in, and they're very interested, and it's, so hopefully.
Wasn't the original intention to have to save companies to do both?
Well, the, the problem with the piggyback was that they had parts inside their contracts, so they made money. They, they, a lot of these companies get deals by buying extra, doing two, three or four golf courses a year, so they can get, part of their prices a little bit different. And then they come around and give you a markup on it, so it really wasn't apples to apples when you tried to piggyback it, and I didn't wanna get.
I didn't mean by piggyback, I mean, it wasn't to save companies from doing both products.
Yes, sir, that's, that's intention, I mean, the whole thing is.
But if we tend to bid out just for the deer, how are they gonna know when one emotional, and the other?
Well, I, in theory, if we contract the deer, contract for turtle, it gives you that. Exactly, that's correct. How are they gonna know? Well, we're gonna have another meeting once we, yeah, once you guys say that the documentation is good, we'll have an RFP meeting with the contractors. And then we can say that, maybe we can use that as a token, and say that, you know, we're gonna have, uh, turtles. And hopefully get less than the number that are trying to make this all work, I'm gonna try to get it done in one day. That's the whole thing, and we sit down with it, because if it's too much, we might make the five and a half shift.
How much do we have, how much is the budget?
Million. That might not be true, you're right, it was, you're right. Because it was three hundred thousand for turtles, so. Five for turtle and three hundred thousand, or, or, three hundred thousand for turtle, and ninety-six, or ninety-five for deer.
So if you're unbound, right, you do, but that would be our advantage, it is our, you know.
Yes, sir.
And, and so if you don't wanna wait, we don't like that turtle to hold up.
Correct. Now, the next reason I would do a beer is also, and the price, the price increase that we talked about last meeting, when it was in fact that we watched him sign a commitment, like, lock in our price. At that, that's all that was, last meeting, was just to lock in our pricing for the parts.
Well, here's, here's what I'm thinking. I don't, I think the budget is not going to be five, I think the budget is going to be two million, three. And then three hundred thousand, so I think the whole thing is like, five, six. It's only, it would be as high as, move, eight.
We don't, which is, well, we don't know what it is. We don't know until we get to.
Right, so what I'm concerned about is, we wanna even waste our time in formulating a big turtle, so we probably won't do it. Because, and because the other thing is, we haven't discussed yet, uh, the road, the court has. And that's not the goal, we, so we're talking, not too much, that we don't have a plan to spend, maybe we shouldn't send them, which is.
Well, I mean, we could argue that. The key of hitting deer bids, we can find out where that is.
Well, deer, sure, we'll go, yeah.
And, and then we just put turtle together at one point, and piggyback it, you'd be.
I mean, I don't think we have enough money to.
I, I would either, but I just, I mean, I, I figured if you're gonna get it in front of you, because they're gonna pay five, five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars for one of this multiple action, to bring them back in twenty twenty-three. I know if that's what happens, that's what happens, and who knows if they have one in twenty twenty-three. Yeah, my, my current feeling is, with the need to do both, and the inflation factor that we're looking at now. I'd rather try to find a way to come up with more capital, when there's more things to be done. We need, it's, it's not that, you know, I guess everything's an option, but at some point, we're gonna have to do that with kind of turtle. And it's gonna be cheaper to do it now than you're. So you're, yeah, and that's, you do have to ask priority.
Jenny, sorry, Jenny, could you just, uh, name a position?
For my position on the director of economy, uh, within the go.
And the reason is, we're doing all the recording, and the marks in the meeting minutes right now, and they're not familiar with the.
Air distance.
Thank you. Any, any other comments from the board?
Well, so we get, uh, we'll see in the RFP's board package for the next meeting, is the approving additions of that RFP, and it should be coming back in two years.
So just the RFP is one year?
Yeah. Okay. Just, just.
This one from Mark. Yeah, we do have the letter from our team, uh, phase three. I'm sure it was in the board package, the letter, and the knowledge, and that's the uncertainty that ever been had. Worked out, last meeting, advertised, it's correct. Totally appreciate his attention to the.
Yes, you do.
I didn't read that people advertised it as drugs. I had to put him over the edge of Jake, I post two one paragraph.
Can you, can you, can you help? Staff reports.
I'll start with that one, I, uh, Eric, could you go back to the, uh, my staff report, I have a couple graphics up there.
Well, just a minute, uh, is there anybody here from the staff who wants to speak over?
We have, sir. I'll, I'll get mine.
Sorry, Chris.
Oh, sure.
I don't, you're only be the, no shine.
All right, so this week we started on our tree program. Trying to get a lot of the weight off of the water oats, which, you know, that if we don't do it, they're gonna split out, so you'll see, we're on number four right now. We're gonna, our goal is to make some head and piles, and then come back and make the chipper for a week, and then ship everything, and then try to get on some of the same trails. Uh, that's adjacent to beer, or love to abuse, and, and try to utilize that much. Uh, we tried to talk about the chipper, and I know Mike, with currently is trying to get the chipper, but forty-three thousand. I know Omar says it's in the budget, but we can't find where it's in the budget, so I, we just need to this year, and next year, then I think we, uh, we'll put it on the budget. So we'll, we'll try to get it, uh, chipped up, we do currently have a different route right now, for the tree program. Uh, I did, uh, add some cocaine areas as well, but if I haven't forgot about number one, I'm gonna get it, I promise you. So we clean those oats up, and then we're gonna make some love grass, and then the trees we discussed on seven, can we pick them out off the road, can we? We're still gonna do that, I like to do some love grass over there, a week right before the end of the year, and I'll show you what I'm thinking about doing over there. Up to you guys, and plus that, it's just basically off the road, just to make, uh, there's a big area over there that's pretty much just dirt and hay, so I put the love grass in it, and it'll take places in trees. I think it'll look great there. And of course, we tried to fix all the edges on, uh, the liabilities, people getting on and off parts, trying to keep the mangle rolling. Uh, we put out quite a bit of cocaine, and we took the rocks out behind, four green, five green, and, uh, the cocaine behind those on beer. And then put some cocaine behind, uh, instead of green, I worked some. I tried to come up with a little bit more there. Uh, fairways, we started spraying, uh, this week with pigment and foliar, and also suned it, manned on, and took, uh, mungisol, made the sledge on. Overseas came in pretty good, should be tightened up by the end of, uh, week, next week, we'll get a couple more cuts on it, and it's looking, uh, it's looking good, we've been fertilized things as well. Um, and then, uh, the two markers, we've got all those painted, our yard's, well, and then the only other thing I have is irrigation.
Any questions?
Do you still feel that it's gonna be, the fairways will be all right, because of overseeding issue?
Well, you know, it's, the, the whole thing is crazy, that a lot of the issues that we have on the fairways is because of the overseed. So it's gonna be a double-edged sword, it's, so when you put your overseed down, I mean, you got two, four, or five fairway on deer grass, and, um, they're the ones that are having neonicotin pressure. And we've sprayed them, we're gonna keep spraying, uh, we're gonna keep slinging the fertilizer on them. But I promise you, when you get the neonicotins, get everything under control, those fairways will be good, and we talked about.
The treatments that you've done so far, what's the, have you run another test on it, to see what affected this?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we're definitely, well, we're definitely, we're still above threshold, uh, again, I mean, it's a subject takes time. I mean, there are one, one thousand of them, and you can, you put the overseed down, and the population fries even harder, because it's freshly rerooted. And that's what's gonna happen if you keep overseeding, a lot of the areas around the practice screen you have around the clubhouse, is all because of the overseed. Number eighteen, the same thing, when you overseed it, while the ball, you, you created the neonicotin issue. So the best thing is get your turf healthy in there, where, you know, we can, I'm gonna spray the, uh, have a mechanism all winter, and keep trying to get the neonicotin to count down. I'm just gonna start spraying every two weeks, we spray the foliar, but actually fertilize twice this week, uh, with the foliar and the sledge, and the mungisol, and the pigment, we help keep the turf formula as well. We give you the definition, I definitely understand, four stem, five stem, the holy you live on, I mean, the fairway was thin, when we started it, it's a lot better. Uh, this is a process, I mean, we could curfew it next year, kill it, but, but still not gonna, the neonicotin's come back. Curfew is the, the few that, that basically lasts maybe forty-eight hours, so you still got, they're still gonna come back again. Until you get it totally eradicated with the neonicotins, then we're gonna curfew five.
So we might, we're presenting, where are you at on the threshold?
The threshold right now, I mean, we were, we were at, uh, four hundred fifty-nine on that fairway, and we're down now to about two. So, and that threshold is, the threshold is right around a hundred or ninety-five, so we still got a ways to go, and we're still treating it, um, it's expensive treatments, but, I mean, so, you don't get turtle. What we've done on turtle, on ten through eighteen, those fairways were really thin, a lot of the tee boxes were thin, it's just a process, I wish I could whip up the notes and put it to, and, and get it healthier, but. The only way we're gonna do that is, uh, curfew again, and that's two hundred eighty dollars a acre. So.
I mean, what, I think, I, what I think we ought to do is somehow figure out a way to notify the membership that's still not.
I write a newsletter every month.
I don't know, I write the newsletter every month, they don't, no, thanks, she did, but separate communication. On this situation, maybe both. I know you write a newsletter, I read it, but the majority of people I don't read. So, well, because all I hear is people can break, what kind of communication can they have? I don't know, I mean, separate, yelling from, from people, say, here's, here's what I'm doing, and here's what's gonna happen. Short and brief, at least, get something. I don't know, what do you think?
It doesn't ever hurt to communicate, for those that wanna read it, because we are obviously probably going to hear complaints about the conditions.
We are, yeah. So, so if we put out something, you know, specifically addressing why we did not overseed this year. This, 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 and this, and then what we expect to happen in the near future.
I, I, I wrote it in my cover, why we weren't overseed, but I'll, I'll be, maybe we just stick with what you wrote and reprint it. I don't wanna be, you know, you asked me about any excuses last.
We don't know, this is not, this is our fault, but I understand that the membership was thought into seeding. As a way to fix the fairways, right, they were, right, right wrong, they were taught into doing it, and we funded it, now, now we're saving. No, that's not right, seeding is not the way to go, this is the way to go.
It, it's, it's not a fix when it's only four months out here, so you guys are overseeding in, in, so you, you, you guys are overseeding in November, right? So you basically said fifty-two thousand dollars on overseed to get three or four months out of it, and keep your winter play happy, and, and then you suffer the consequences, all sunk. So you're, you're, you're not justifying.
But the problem that you have, your company's the one that taught the system.
Well, listen.
I don't know about you, your company taught the system.
Right, we can scan a cat a thousand times.
You're defending something you don't have to.
I, I'm not defending, I'm just saying, economically, you're down this far south, it doesn't make any sense to oversee. I know I got a tough road ahead to dig the fairways where we want, I can tell you this, that I also have a lot of compliments about how good they are, and, and how compared to what they were, even two months ago. So, I mean, if they play it every day, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make any excuses, I'm just saying, I'll get them where you won't have to do it. I mean, it'll be good, but it's a double-edged sword, if I didn't oversee this year, we would've came out of it the same way, and I'd have been done with it all maximum, just as well. So I, I, I'll put three.
We are, we are not arguing with the process that you have in place. All we're saying is that, yes, we did overseed, and we overseeded in the past, I was a big proponent of it, because I wanted it to look like it did. It looked a good professional, everybody wanted to come here, I don't wanna lose this, and we're gonna lose some of that, because I don't think it's gonna be anywhere close to what it looked like last year. And all we're doing is explaining why we have changed the process, and why we're doing what we're doing, we can communicate that, and that's, that's what I got at the first, are, are there gonna be people that aren't happy with it? Yes. Hopefully, we can make them happy in a couple years.
I, I'll be here.
Okay, fine, I mean, we're not arguing with you, I'm just telling you, the people come up to the board, the board members, uh, now, the people who come up to me, they say what they wanna say about the cost provision. I'm not the guy that should be struggling with them, because I probably won't do it for it.
Well, and listen, when I'm on a golf course working, which I think is quite regular, I mean, I try to engage with them, uh, and try to discuss stuff personally, I mean, I, I don't avoid them. I, I'd rather you give me your copies of them, or that I could see. Here's the reason you were doing this.
We're just supposed to be in the boardroom, too.
Unless we're supposed to be in the boardroom, yeah, definitely.
That's right. Are the white green, that necessary?
Hey, if you, if, if you guys wanna take them out for a month and try it, and see what the whole quality is, I'm fine with that, too, and they definitely.
I'd never put in white, right?
There, you know, it's, uh, it's definitely, uh, there's always gonna be an issue with them, but there's also gonna be a racket effect, so it's. I mean, I, if you guys would like to do a try, I'm gonna.
I don't care.
All right, I'll, I'll work on, I, I continue with.
I do, I do have a question against the ending, and I missed this on the last conversation, uh, about the, uh, policy. It says here, there's a ten dollar party program for use of the club card by member, which we have now been charged. It says unlimited use packages for the purchase of a.
That's our, that's our non-part of the fee to charter members that don't have a private card.
Oh, so that just says all, we just put that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna do the, uh, staff update for golf, uh, so tomorrow is our yearly veterans tournament, uh, so we'll be utilizing both horses, we've got right now a hundred and sixty players for that. The Citrus Golf Trail Open, which is scheduled for November thirtieth, December first and second, uh, that's gonna be morning crossover time, we have the minor golf tour here. Uh, currently, there are right around ninety players to a hundred players, uh, if we don't get to that one fifty, uh, threshold, which is what we're wanting to get to. Basically, what we're gonna do is shrink down those crossover times, then open up more times for the afternoon for our membership to play. So excited about that, it'll be, uh, it'll be a pretty cool thing to get ninety-one professionals here playing both courses. Be interesting to see what they should, uh, we'll see some numbers up there. We just finished up two demo days, uh, yesterday, we had PXG Cobra, uh, Cleveland Golf was here, we did about nine thousand sales, and, uh, Saturday beforehand, uh, we did. Callaway King and Taylor Maiden, we did about eleven, five, twelve for that, so.
Callaway King and Taylor Maiden. We did about eleven by twelve for that. So, club sales are continuing to, you know, continue to go through. Uh, it seems as though the, the supply chain with the clubs is getting a little bit better now that the very itself went down. So hopefully, our customers don't have to wait months and months to get their clubs. Um, and it's nice to have PXG here. Good to have them out here, enjoy that. Um. Sign up for the formerly known Carter Hall, uh, Women's Invitation, which is now the Citrus Golf Trail Ladies Invitational. It's hard to say we're over a hundred players already. So. And just talking about ladies, uh, today is day one of the state championship at Mission Inn. And my daughter's teeing off here, so she just beat off home minutes ago. So, uh, girls made state for the first time in quite a few years. And, uh, just wanna thank you guys for all the support from both the boys and girls, uh, secret high school teams. It's great to see them. Last day and hopefully they'll play well. Um. Membership, uh, membership's flowing in today. We've got, uh, three hundred and fifteen memberships. That'll be going up today. I know Amberie's very busy in there all week and, uh, it's got more folks to sign up today. So we're at nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, uh, which is a hundred and thirty grand ahead of last year's base, seventy-five percent of our total budget. So, uh, memberships are flowing in. Seeing a lot of new faces every day that we haven't seen in eighteen months. So, I'm fully anticipating this by here. You're, you're my finger in the night with everybody down there. So, um. Restaurant, um, update for Thanksgiving is we've got currently four hundred and fifty reservations already. So.
Sounds hot.
Yeah. We usually do, I think somewhere in the four to five hundred range and have four fifty now, but a few weeks ago is. Fortunately, that day would be really good. Um. That's really all I've got. Uh, most of you guys have some questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Very informative, people. Dave, I think you.
Okay, now a whole lot, uh, got a, uh, proposed contract from Mr. Ornic's attorney, uh, on the option agreement. And he's perusing twenty properties. Um, I reviewed the contract, gave a copy to Chris and responded to, uh, Mr. Ornic's attorney that everything looks fine. So we expecting a signed copy of that contract with them next week. Uh, it's only about ten thousand dollars, a little bit less for the twenty properties at three hundred and sixty something dollars property. For the option agreement. So. I mean, yeah, we're getting above, correct? So we'll just have Chris sign that contract when it comes in because of the, the, the. The, the foreclosures that they took place on some of the sporadic properties are ready to go. We're going out of mail today. Fifty-eight oh one, uh, Renata, I do not have an update, but I have meeting with the, uh, building, have a meeting in the building department later on today. On some other issues, that's one of the issues I'm gonna break up.
I'm taking care of the one there, because somebody's cut the grass. I mean, somebody's.
They're, they're wish taking care of the grass.
Cause I just go back to the day it was cut.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll see what kind of an update they can give you when I have a, a meeting with them. I haven't, I don't know if it's shifted back over to the code enforcement or somebody again about the building department. And we've been doing a lot of bond holder releases. The bond holder issue is, is working out. They're finalizing a lot of, uh, properties that have been transferred back to them, sending those out. And, uh, while doing all those late releases and that recording department, I was aware of that. Uh, it looks like all the closings for one of the major developers, I think they pulled in at three, approximately three hundred county sold lots closed this past, you know, since last time I was there, which was earlier this week. No, it wasn't Southern homes, the one that started.
They blow, they, they are.
Years are good. It may work better than transportation on the top. There's just a lot of that technology.
Just based on your knowledge, you just replace it.
That's sort of like, otherwise you're going to be piecing it up. If you're going to start half of it, you have to start it.
Okay, just wanted to get his answer.
I'd talk to him, but. He's going to be really interesting. And putting in the meters in the ground for a project like this is really almost the easy part. The PR you're doing and getting out in front with residents, we're going to be working on your street. Sorry, we're going to shut the water off for twenty minutes while you're doing this. Making sure the restoration's correct. There's a lot of small, small lights in that lunch bucket. And we also sent a letter to Duke and got a response from them because there's a number of transformers out there two feet away from our meter boxes that are falling into the ground. And we have sent part of this project if they could come out and straighten up all those transformers. They're engineer charred at least, so we're going to start a big repair. But we have gotten in the weeds, even down to the point of what kind of side was in the meter box in. Upon one side of the community, but it's fine. Size not work too good. Occasionally they'll tear up six inches a foot away from the meter box. So getting that side put back in, just like I did before they started. And also this project includes replacing about fifty percent of the meter boxes. In the community, their own lap of day that is shaped and broken past thirty years away. So that'll be a nice cosmetic appearance change.
You see, when we did this, regardless which company does it, is there any need to be used to hit the residents?
Water's going to be shut off for fifteen or twenty minutes. Basically, they won't notice it or will put a door hanger up there and they can go flush their line for a couple of minutes. And they probably go to twenty more times.
So we're very much, you gotta wait, they're gonna have to say to us like, people, this is somebody's home.
Oh, yeah. And as I say, that's going to be the hard part. We're naming with our residents, making sure it works for them and our needs. Or doing the least amount of time we can. Also, I provided an update rather than a video of the meeting that we had with the county staff on faith and Shoemaker Drive. Basically, the price tax way up, even during our process, ten to four thousand dollars. The big thing now is they don't want anything to do with it before they pay you back and have their contract on Shoemaker extension. They said, no, we don't do that anymore. You don't close your extension, you guys aren't the people you prefer.
See, you know what, I've been thinking about that. And I'd like to ask. Scott Borgher.
Scott.
If we build three hundred homes out there, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. That the county's going to get every year.
Well, that's.
I mean, that to me is something, I don't think they're acting with that in thought. I mean, and we build a hundred homes a year, you know. That's probably a lot of fifty thousand. So they're getting all this money and they're giving us free, so we want to make the road there.
Well, and I think that's.
A little confusion. They're, they're.
Money that's going to use eventually.
On top of that, they received about ten million dollars in sales of our tunneling related lots. It would be auction process with about ten million dollars plus that they had put in their coffins that they didn't expect to have.
I brought that up at the meeting, Greg. Daniel told me it wasn't eight or nine million if it's worth it. Four, five, I'm okay. But I, I, I didn't have the question like that.
My understanding from the last bid, that they have is twelve thousand dollars a lot. At five hundred and thirty-nine lots, that's twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I can get to that over five, four or five, but just in that safe. Not talking about what's had going on for the past year and a half.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, I mentioned that in the study too.
In, in our meeting, Scott right there was, we met with the county and two people from Rosemont. It, it really in a sense is until the county changes its way charging, you know, I, I guess we're going to have to pay half of the extension that Shoemaker has passed. That's the, uh, instead of, I mean, maybe they've been, we've never, they acknowledge if it's a request, but since it's our request, I think if I'm correct, we, we pay half, but most places would, would charge a lot of orders in February of the year and separate it and do this. It looks to me like it's going to be our cost if we want to do that two hundred feet of road. The Schumacher is going to cost us over four hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that fair?
That's one. We're going to pay half of the Shoemaker extension and then we're going to pay two hundred and eighty, ninety for to do that new extension for Jazz. So it's just something we should talk about and maybe if, if we don't want to be even getting involved, we just quit it. Uh, because to me that's awful excessive and maybe when the county comes up with a different way of helping, because I think it's an improvement to the county, not just some way, I mean. Uh, but it doesn't sound like they agree with me. And, and that's fine, that's fine too. But right now, I, I just don't think they're the way that, uh, but that's only my opinion, we can talk about it more, but the and it's, and they want to extend, uh, Sho- Schumacher down further. Uh, not, not to just let them come out, but they want to make it further down the road too, so.
So that's.
No, that's.
Schumacher, that's their shit.
That's their, that's their shit. But right now, it's, it's closer to the five hundred thousand dollars for us to extend Cortez.
I don't think we can put, we've got to keep talking about this because
I don't think.
The additional loans in there's sometimes, you have some.
I don't find though fifty-fifty. I mean, personally, if that goes, because I think we need to do this, but they got to come to the news after.
But I think the best course of action to take at this time is that our next order meeting, ask the board to take the loans and ask the commissioner to include this budget and the county of development budget. It started February of March and put the money in for Shoemaker Road, see if it survives and start working out those details. And maybe that the chair and the board and everybody, commission even with the residents.
I mean, one year of assessments for the county, for those three hundred homes.
I agree, I agree.
They don't take reasonable awards, they won't just stop because he was just an opponent of people out there. A lot of these residents paid and helpers are out there, paid fifty percent to do it. But if we get the item on the budget and some are responding to the state place and some of that cost share. And even if it doesn't work out for this year, a lot of times first year goes the budget, but the second year it's zero losses. So I would recommend you go to Scott and formal request from the board on the budget to start working, um, staff. And so the first step in the commission and see if that's somewhere.
We, we tried it. It's, it didn't sound real favorable at the beginning, and of course, we just listened and and they're going to have to move the Shoemaker over to or Schumacher, that's not Schumacher, but it's, it's going to have to be moved up north to the north. So the cost of that is, uh, estimate is four hundred thousand dollars. They want us to pay half because we asked. And which is, that's their rule, that's, um, but nobody else, they're all those lots and we decide to pay it out.
So the Schumacher is fifty-fifty?
Yes.
So that's the winner of that.
Yes, and then our quote was.
Two hundred and seventy, so the most extended class is four hundred and seventy-five.
Right now, great. For, and all we're really doing is extending Cortez, cut one feet.
But that's the positive.
Yeah, yeah. And they, they showed some concern about, they had some concerns about the, uh, US regarding twenty-seven and Schumacher intersection of our road.
That's what.
Yes, but they didn't, they didn't.
It's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree, it was pretty frustrating.
They can have more concerns than what.
Yeah.
And I have all this. The traffic is still going to be there regardless of whether you.
That's the point.
Even if you don't do Cortez, the traffic is still going to be there. That intersection is still going to be affected.
That's right.
I, my impression is staff has a really good job of being negative. And it's our job to try and get the board to be more supportive. If the board is going to decide what happens, not staff.
I mean, they're going to get all this win. But it's a win, it's a win-win. They're, they're basically telling us that we've had every wrong, it sounds proper.
They're not arguing, we're going to get that money of the percentage of Schumacher.
Yeah.
And so are lots.
And we, you guys have all made some good points, but when I was competing, I didn't, I didn't want to just slightly set a few things that that wasn't the time to, to try to make sense of what you're doing, because they're telling us what they're going to do. And so that's why I, I did that, which all raised very good, very good questions.
I, I think we need to move forward and we need to kind of, that's where we're at. It's not going to.
Now we recommend.
About what's going to be done in the process and more family support.
I would recommend that one board member, you know, look to my extremely left on this to represent a bigger spokesperson that gets me, so we have any feel. I mean, if he hears it from all of us, it's going to get, you know, I think if it's not, I think if you send me a little mic, I don't think it's. Not, we, yeah. It's honest, I said, you know, you're going to get all this money, plus a lot, going to do this, and say, oh, the board wants to, this is what he partners with. But one guy says it, this is it.
We'll be some ice. It's how we bought one for every resident, so it's like, well, maybe that's. But it's got to.
I can say, I can say it. We can't sit there and say the town has to do anything for us and then turn, and then sit there and ask them for money. Right, so we got to have a positive spin up, that's all I'm saying.
That's why I put myself out of the way.
I'll make sure I have my ones for sure. So before we defend this, there are quite a lot of things.
But if true, it's far, what is it, ten?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's a win-win to them because they're kind of, you know how they say about the vote? We want this money, all these people, some people, this is great, this is what's happening. That, that, next, and I know we can be positive. Then they.
All right, you don't have to respond to this, but.
Thank you.
And, uh, this is basically just an overview of the SR process. I noticed a discussion last time because it really is a conversation. But we have the interest rates in twenty percent of what market commercial takes rates are. It's good to go through this process, but there's, there's so many different modules involved with this. Our right now is module three or planning requirements for approved last week. The facilities planning, excuse the last name, facilities plan for minus four hundred and five thousand dollars. That is that planning requirement that you send about request for inclusion. And that gets sent on this for possible funding, first year is working at design department. Whatever project it is, secondary ability for construction.
Did, did you see the local paper today? I asked for an award of forty million dollar feeder.
For that?
For that. Forty million dollars.
Oh.
I thought, but that, they're saying it was a grant, but it could be at the year, you know, a lot of times we went to the SRF and developed projects that all those are listed about twelve of them, and they're like, okay, guns for different, strike that's fine. And it could be politically that they got some money, more money, they can save up, save up. There could be parents or people who can't control the rates enough to run sewer or take second tanks off one round fights. Putting it on central service, stopping pollution of those. So that's how.
And that could very well, I, I always saw it with favorite forty million dollar. And that was a grant, not, not a bonus.
Right.
We're going to try to break up, so it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Different parts of the community have shown who services this area, this is lower, it's something like another sign. So we'll, we'll work to the end. All right. But that's, that's the process to go through. And it probably be August, next month, so with the next fall, we give you grants, show an application, bring it forward. For approval, that's for the rubber hits, so we decided here and signed that. She asked, do you really think this is a place to start a plant? And I could really get answered very kind of this, three reports that were done in the last four or five years. They document all the shortcomings of the system, adaptations, improvements. Other than that, twenty-five thousand dollar facility plan, what the requires is they make you examine all the alternatives. So the engineers, such as that, for a water association, with all the support, but they're still. So that's the report that we'll come back to the board on, start a part of the parent of the residents. It's approved by the board and send that up to the.
I have a question on the order meeting. Sure, you, I know you was having this information, but so. On the estimated cost, you have a breakdown of how they come to this thing? Of, of the one point two five? Each time that we've gone through that, we've got. You have to choose.
Yes, sir. Can you give me a copy? Yes, sir, I will, it's, uh, both attached to the analysis and, uh, starting on that by seven.
I love your question. I mean, because you know, again, if you look back, the estimated meeting cost of the rate is, uh, ten or fifty. I'd like to see how they come up with.
There's numbers, so. There's a, there are levels to look in the software. Applications to work, so it's on, but I feel like. And that's just the type of programs and we just brought that up. Like classes, you know, they have clean water, going to say, oh, there's some fire now, plus their flames. Terrible situation. They have those replant waters. And some of them are possible, or just water.
This might, I can't hear anything.
Place, so they're replant water, so.
It's so.
The community has not looked yet for the purpose of the water. Or, they also have smaller grant programs in that top area. Next shot of patient.
Do you have the microphone? I know, right?
They also have smaller grants, similar to about fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. Price control, it's from the census, things like that for efficient, if you run a community law. So some of this work will win, of course, we will consider this part of this to be less grand. That is great. So we're also careful with issue.
Yep, and hey, Chris, we moved the mic over, it's not picking up very well, that's okay.
And one more.
Sorry, I'm trying to get these mics going. Another one?
That's just the process, there, the book's our construction loan process. Steps, and they're all late now. It's on paperwork, let the, that's on, it's after the project, you know, assignments. Paying statements that hold, wage recording acts. Interviews with people, be around this money, but they can serve a client who has steel. It's a huge.
Is that three hundred and sixty days up there, is that just in the moment agreement we decided upon, or is that the whole process?
This whole process, the time it started, that's why I was saying next August, we should be in that. In September, it's in this one application, so that's, you're.
That whole, I'm, it's four months before the.
And hopefully, so I sound a little nasty there in this one, my red face.
Okay, that's right, that's only five.
And, uh, and they're only about a month overdue with the, the price of follow-up, that'd be correct, and what's higher? And I just had a couple other items there. And then the election coming up and that's a very time-consuming process that. Should move a lot of the parts. Size, it's valid, proxies involved in the election, hire someone to serve, attention to the ballot boxes. Box and gate to the supervisor of election, right? Thinking that, our, when we start up, like. Next week, we're going to start with newsletter and switch out the sites with qualifying periods.
Starting next week. And by the way, I understand that. Yes, okay?
Check that out. That, that's, that's my first.
And just, just so I feel that, we have to do a better job, no time, other than, you know. We need no time to. It's why that's the deal with my, my.
And also, let that be scheduled on that side.
Here.
And I just have a note here too, close out, that would be driven to my also, it's going to start putting in the monthly spend for the SR, engineering, a huge part of our budget. I'm seeing areas according to your engineering, the, they were, a little bit on the percents, a lot more sections. Just to show.
Speaking in front of this summit, do we know how many of that, babe?
I have to get it.
Thank you.
I have, can you mention? When you do the site. Yes, money budget to extend down. Oh, no. Do we have that, what she said? No, no, I meant ours, for us. You want, as you said, was to, you know, make it turn, but. But I'll, I'll talk to her, she mentioned that, but she had. Yeah, I, I have nothing else.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to question that.
I mean, it could have been two hundred years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Yeah, uh, Beverly and I both, well, all of us, I guess, have received a second notice from this Maria Rose on needing an ARP application because they were doing solar work on a forty-five thirteen Adrian Street receiver, and she's wanting an ARP application. In fact, I don't know if you guys would did it.
I haven't seen it.
We know. Okay. I'll, okay, let me forward it. Was this the second, second request? You got, I sent it to.
And we are moving forward with, because today we're hoping to get to the point where we can have the agenda on one side of the screen and people watching on the other. Uh, we have camera views and we can switch around the chat. Better rest and say, I hope we're online. Turn her, if you're talking. Yeah, we do that, but this is kind of a start, but we do have a video function now. Got it, girl.
The notes in this meeting will be the actual report.
Oh, we don't have notes, because legally we require to have meet notes that have a brief summary of what's discussed, a motion and a vote. That's all the meetings are required to have by statute. What we'll do is take the recording from this meeting, both the audio and video, and post it to YouTube and on our website will have one. Hyperlinks, if anybody wants to go, we're verbatim of the said, and watch this recording in the meeting.
Okay, so I guess when, I'm not really good on this kind of stuff. So we're, right now, I go on the website, there's, there's media and there's audio, some choice. So if I'm going to hit the audio choice, I'm going to get the actual meeting.
You'll get, I believe you'll get YouTube then.
Let's take it to YouTube and see the video and.
Okay, so it's just the same, we go on the same way and just.
That's my understanding, Chris can obviously speak better to that, having worked with Infomark.
If somebody wanted to make coffee or that, and then we put it on the flash drive and give it to them. Otherwise, you could sit at home and watch the same thing you've been seeing the whole week.
See, we do go back to that column and check ourselves. Okay. You guys do a deck?
Please.
We're going to start going to close that, like, we thought the cameras could be super ready.
Any unfinished business? Business? The mayor reports? Discussion to a firm of work?
Can we change to get rid of some of this stuff that we've never done?
It comes, the, here we'll sort out the agenda, it's not the.
I mean, the process that we go through, I mean, we always ask for many reports and we have many. It's the things that not just not. Um, I don't know.
Are you going to be ready for?
Not this, not this. Well, it's out, good this morning, I actually saw Lisa, as far as I know, it's company meeting. Oh, Michael?
Okay, let, let's talk about this one point, do we need to talk about this?
He's doing, uh, rehab, he's going to rehab.
Okay.
Doing much better. He won't let on, but he's got a little voice, but he is getting better today, getting stronger. I, I don't think, he's not going to see anybody, but want to get a call, I think, I think this problem isn't a call.
Guy called on the other day, but we could have been, you know, in rehab at the time, so.
Yeah, they, he's in rehab in the house, so it varies what time he does it. Unless he does his own rehab, at least.
Okay, any other discussions to work?
I just want to put on the radar, um, we, we just put together the budget, but we're also looking at CPI numbers that are coming out of six plus percent inflation. I just think you need to be aware that you may either relook at budgets halfway down the year here next month, because we were pricing, uh, you need to adjust prices on workforce and we may have some other expenses you're going to have to deal with in the budget, or it may be difficult to make our business issue.
I will. Okay, I'll be in your turn.
Cause I'll have a comment.
I was at the beginning.
It's at the first, but we can now, we can put it there on. You can, you can come up, Tom, and call it a order again. We have a comment, but let's start with, about six months ago.
Okay, state your name for the record. Tom Costy-Rose, and I'd just like to invite all the board members and staff that are here to go on.
Tom Costi-Rosey, and I'd just like to invite all the board members and staff that are here to go online and listen to the recordings. Of previous meetings, especially this one. And try for yourself to understand or recognize what's being discussed. And get anything as a member of the public out of what's in the recordings of these meetings, what we're supposed to hear, what what took place. I'm sitting in the back row, I could hear not even fifty percent of what was said at this meeting, and we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. In the fifteen years that I've lived here, replacing all of this stuff, look at all these speakers, they couldn't understand what you were saying in the back row. And if you can't understand it here in this room, through the speaker system, it's the same system that's being recorded and being put on the line. So try it, you won't like it. And whatever we put on YouTube, it's not gonna come through any clearer if we're still using the same.
Like the recordings.
You need them.
Whatever, but you know, everybody that's on TV is wearing a little mic on their collar. And they're not worried about whether the switch is on or not, or they've got a a wand that comes up from the desk that's right near their mouth, and they don't have to worry about. Where it is and where it isn't. But if you go online and try to figure out what's going on, what went on at the meeting, it's not adequate for the public to understand what's taking place.
Yeah, thanks. At least you're the, um, on the board. That didn't.
I think we could have somebody end in that, see if we can move.
We did.
I mean, after we hear the recording.
Yeah, it did, the recordings that we can have that, because a lot of the thing issues are just, we've been, we're so used to talking, you know. Far away from the light as opposed to, you know, within inches, so it's a big difference where your, your wife's.
And we have to talk about the level of advice as well, and kind of the prospect, but I don't know what that cost.
Okay, you're in your turn.